Good evening and welcome to the April 11th, 2024, meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. Mr. Secretary, please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Klopp.
Here.
Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Nating.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Strongman.
Here. And our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. Does somebody like to pull one to discuss it or make a motion to pass the consent calendar?
Move to pass the consent calendar.
Second.
Would you take the role, please?
Who was second? Was it Commissioner Ward?
Hi.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson, Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to our public communications, this portion of the meeting is reserved for commission, items not, for public comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the commission cannot act on items raised during this public communications, but may respond briefly to statements or made to questions posed. Request clarification or refer to the item to staff. Do we have anybody who'd like to make a public comment? And this is anything but Toyota project. Seeing none, we will close the public communications and move on to our public hearing. Our first public hearing is the mixed-use special district project, immense general plan, north downtown specific plan, and municipal code zoning and development agreement application Y21-025. And we'll start out with staff presentation. Oh, excuse me, one before we do that. Do we have any ex parte communications between commissioners and the applicant?
Start down the bottom. Okay. I've received emails from the consultant of the Toyota Walnut Creek.
I received emails as well, and I also met with them via Zoom.
I also received emails and met via Zoom to go over the project.
Likewise, Zoom meeting.
Zoom meeting.
I did too.
I did, but mine was in person. So, proceed.
Okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Darren Newfeld. I will be presenting on the proposed mixed, actually, do we, sorry, do we have that presentation up? Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Darren Newfeld. I will be presenting on the proposed mixed-use special district project. The applicant, Toyota Walnut Creek, is seeking to create a new mixed-use special district overlay, shown here in gold, to the current auto sales service and custom manufacturing district, or ASCM, within the north downtown specific plan area. In addition to the automobile uses currently allowed at the sites, which are within one-half mile of the Walnut Creek BART station, the mixed-use special district would allow for potential mixed uses, including office, multifamily residential, hotel, and/or other compatible non-residential uses. The applicant would be required to enhance operations of its current auto sales service and ancillary uses through construction of a new auto sales and service facility located in the mixed-use special district area. To do so, the applicant is seeking amendments to the Walnut Creek general plan, north downtown specific plan, municipal code, and approval of a development agreement. The proposal seeks to advance the vision for the north downtown and facilitate the enhancement and long-term viability of the Toyota Walnut Creek dealership by allowing for redevelopment of land within the mixed-use special district with other potential new uses. The new mixed-use special district overlay would set forth permitted uses as well as specific development standards and design guidelines that would govern future development of projects within the district. There is no specific development proposal at this time. In exchange for legislative changes and approval of a development agreement, the applicant or future developers would be required to provide benefits to ensure development certainty. These include a full-service auto dealership, multi-use pathways, and an additional 2% affordable housing above the inclusionary housing ordinance requirements for a total of 12% affordable housing. The Planning Commission is being asked to consider and recommend to the City Council certification of the supplemental environmental impact report, or SEIR, and to consider and recommend approval of the requested mixed-use special district amendments to the general plan, north downtown specific plan, zoning, and a development agreement. On October 15th, 2019, City Council adopted the north downtown specific plan to guide the development of a vibrant mixed-use district with residential, commercial office, retail, restaurant, civic, hospitality, arts, auto sales and service, and entertainment uses. On February 16th, 2021, City Council considered a request by applicant Toyota Walnut Creek to proceed with an application for a potential general plan amendment that would authorize multifamily residential, hotel, office, and/or other compatible non-residential uses in the ASCM general plan land use designation as part of a mixed-use special district overlay. On May 18th, 2021, a joint public meeting with the City Council, Planning Commission, Design Review Commission, and Transportation Commission was held to introduce the proposed legislative amendments and commence conversations between the city's advisory and decision-making bodies and the applicant with the intent of refining the focus and direction of the proposed general plan amendment, north downtown specific plan, and zoning changes. No formal action was taken. Public review of the SEIR was conducted in the summer of 2023, and two public comments were received during the required 45-day public review period. Throughout the process, the ad hoc committee met to discuss the project. We are here today for a recommendation from Planning Commission. City Council is scheduled to consider the project on May 7th. The north downtown specific plan envisions the area's evolution into one with vibrant mixed uses, which integrate residential, commercial office, retail, restaurant, civic, hospitality, arts and entertainment uses, while continuing to be an important job center and location for automobile sales and service. Among the goals of the north downtown specific plan is to harness and direct market demand for more urbanized development near the Walnut Creek BART station, while also preserving and enhancing the strong sales tax base in the area, especially the auto sales and service uses which are concentrated within the plan area. Additionally, the north downtown specific plan seeks to protect and enhance the existing jobs and auto sales and service industry in the plan area, including promoting new urban showroom designs for auto dealers, auto dealerships looking to redevelop their By way of background, the north downtown specific plan currently has two special districts, an arts district, shown here in red, and a makers row, shown in blue, which are intended to create opportunities for handcrafted manufacturing, including brewing, ceramics, jewelry making, and shared technology or tool space. The proposed mixed-use special district overlay would become the third special district in the plan area, which is indicated here in purple. The proposed mixed-use special district is 6.2 acres on sites A, B, and C, located approximately one-half mile from the Walnut Creek BART station. It is generally bounded by North Main Street to the west, Pine Street to the north, Civic Drive to the east, and Ignacio Valley Road to the south. It consists of a total of 10 parcels referred to as 2100 North Main Street, which is site A, 2150 North Broadway, site B, and 2100 North Broadway, site C, and is located entirely within the boundaries of the north downtown specific plan. The applicant also leases land at site D, where they operate the existing Toyota dealership, and site E, within the boundaries of the north downtown specific plan area, but near, and near, but outside, the 6.2 acre mixed-use special district, which is on sites A, B, and C. The mixed-use special district is intended to provide opportunities to maintain and enhance auto sales, service, and related ancillary uses in a transit-rich urban environment by creating opportunities for more intense mixed-use development. The project site location in proximity to BART is ideally situated for the development of a larger mix of uses. This would enable redevelopment by facilitating the future development of more intense multifamily residential, hotel, and/or other compatible non-residential uses on the project site. The amendment to the north downtown specific plan area would include additional Florida area ratio, or FAR. However, for 100% residential buildings in the mixed-use special district, FAR does not apply. Rather, buildings would be subject to a maximum density of 107 units per acre. Under any development scenario, the maximum total residential units for the mixed-use special district would be 658 using this base density. Of these units, 12% must be affordable to low and very low-income households. If affordable units are constructed with market rate units as an integrated development, the unit mix, that is, the number of bedrooms per unit, of the affordable units shall be in the same proportion as the market rate units. If only standalone affordable units are proposed, that is, market rate units will not be integrated with standalone affordable units, then there is no unit mix requirement. Under no circumstances, however, shall the standalone affordable units be single-room occupancy units. The standalone affordable units must be comprised of a mix of studios, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. The mix must be no more than 50% for studios, and at least 10% one-bedroom, and at least 10% two-bedroom. Each unit must, each unit must be at least 350 square feet. The project would exceed the current inclusionary housing requirements. In accordance with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, any voluntary affordable units, that is, excess units above the 12% that are required, constructed as part of the project are subject to the inclusionary zoning credit transfer provisions for purposes of other housing developments constructed within the city. State density bonus, if pursued in the future for the mixed-use special district, could allow additional units, as well as allow heights greater than the maximum allowed by Measure A, which limits heights within the city. The proposed 12% affordable units can be used to create additional density and other reductions of standards. However, through the development agreement and recognizing the importance of Measure A, the applicant has agreed to limit maximum building height, if density bonus is utilized, to 89 feet. The graphic on the right shows the maximum 89-foot height with the green bar. For comparison, this is below the height of the California Plaza, which is 158 feet, and what could be achieved in theory utilizing density bonus for this project, which is 18 stories, shown in the middle bar graph. Without limiting the number of incentives or concessions as authorized under state density bonus law for an application for subsequent approval within the mixed-use district, the city would grant an additional two incentives and/or concessions to be applied at the developer's election in the special district. Incentives and/or concessions include things like increased density, a reduction in site development standards such as setbacks and minimum square footage, or other regulatory incentives or concessions such as special parking requirements. The north downtown specific plan includes a proposed east-west multimodal path along several of the parcels of the proposed district, as noted on the right. The development agreement provides for dedication of a public trail easement located along the southern edge of site A. When a development project comes forward, the pathway would be constructed by that developer. The easement area must be 16 feet in width for at least 80% of the length, and evenly divided between hardscape pathway and landscape areas. The pathway cannot be less than eight feet wide. If the developer acquires ownership of site D, or has entered into a purchase agreement to acquire all of site D, then a public trail easement eight feet wide will be dedicated to the city for future improved pathway along the southern edge of site C. If the developer does not convey the site C easement, then the developer of the auto dealership shall pay the city $500,000. The city may use the money at its discretion towards the cost of providing a pedestrian connection between the Iron Horse Trail, which is shown in this graphic with the solid green line on the right, and the north downtown specific plan The development agreement has an initial period of 10 years with the ability to extend for another five years. A full-service dealership needs to be developed with a minimum building area of 45,000 square feet for auto sales, services, and ancillary uses. The dealership must be located on sites A or B, or can be instructed in part on site D if the applicant is able to acquire site D. If a multifamily housing development is proposed to be built, 12% affordable housing would be constructed, which is above the city's inclusionary housing ordinance of 10%, for low, and 6% for very low affordability. The developer will also pay the city $450,000 to be used by the city for affordable housing programs. Environmental impacts associated with the development of the north downtown specific plan were previously evaluated in the north downtown specific plan EIR, which is adopted by City Council in October of 2019. That EIR analyzed impacts of that specific plan, which resulted in impacts to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, hazards, and hazardous materials, and traffic. Of these, traffic impacts were significant and unavoidable, primarily based on level of service and impacts to Caltrans freeway segments. The rest of the impacts were mitigated to less than significant. The SEIR for the mixed-use special district was prepared to analyze the changes to the north downtown specific plan EIR associated with the redevelopment of sites A through E by the applicant. Although no specific development proposal is being made, Although no specific development proposal is being made, the proposed district would allow for additional and more intensely developed uses and redevelopment of sites within the district. The mixed-use special district and redevelopment of sites D and E would not result in any new or more significant impacts than were already analyzed in the North Downtown specific plan EIR. There is no specific proposed project at this time. Because there is not a specific development proposal, various scenarios were developed in order to study a reasonable possibility of future development and to study the environmental impacts of that proposal. In each of the three scenarios detailed on the following slides, a full-service dealership would be developed along with other possible uses. Any future development must fit within the envelope of what was studied in this supplemental EIR and comply with the maximum number of use types indicated in the scenarios, which I'll discuss on the next slide. These three scenarios do not represent or limit how actual subsequent developments can take place. Rather, they were developed based on a reasonable worst-case scenario of what might occur in the future within the mixed-use special district. All scenarios include auto sales and service of 142,094 square feet and 40,564 square feet of office. Scenario one has an office emphasis with roughly 473,000 square feet of additional office space that could be developed resulting in a total of 514,000 square feet of office space. Scenario two includes a mix of multifamily residential and hotel uses with 132 units of multifamily residential and 723 hotel rooms. Scenario three emphasizes multifamily development with a total of 658 multifamily residential units. Scenario three reflects the reasonable worst-case scenario for almost all environmental topic areas studied under CEQA. Where scenarios one and two represent the worst-case scenario, a particular issue area, those were of a particular issue area, those were identified and evaluated in the supplemental EIR. The use of these scenarios ensures the SEIR provides a conservative analysis and enough information for decision-makers and the public to understand potential environmental impacts and consequences of the proposed project. Where impacts from the project were potentially significant, the SEIR identifies mitigation measures to reduce those impacts to less than significant. All impacts from this project can be mitigated to less than significant. There are no statement of overriding considerations for this project. The issue areas on this slide are those that were potentially significant but with mitigation were reduced to a level below significance. All other issue areas were, were either less than significant or did, were not impacted by the mixed-use special district. The SEIR was circulated on June 30th, 2023, and the city received two public comments before the end of the 45-day public review period. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife recommended modifying the project's mitigation for impacts to roosting bats. The city was amenable and a minor modification was made to this mitigation measure. If bats are excluded from structures during construction, bat houses shall be installed adjacent or as close as possible to that construction so that the bats have a place to roost. And the East Bay Municipal Utility District noted that the project requires a water supply assessment and commented on the SEIR's notice of preparation. The water supply assessment was completed and returned to the city in 2023, in February 2023. That project would be required to comply with all applicable East Bay Municipal Utility District standards. Staff is here today before the planning commission seeking several recommendations. Specifically, staff recommends the, the planning commission move to adopt the resolution recommending to the city council the certification of the supplemental environmental impact report, including adoption of all relevant findings and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and move to adopt the resolution recommending to the city council the adoption of the resolution to amend the general plan and the North Downtown specific plan, an ordinance to amend the municipal code, zoning ordinance inclusive of amendments to the zoning map, and an ordinance finding that the development agreement is consistent with the general plan, North Downtown specific plan, and zoning ordinance as amended, as amended, and approve, and approving the development agreement. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you for a great, detailed presentation. And we'll start out with questions of council to staff. Is that correct?
To the commission to staff, yes.
Yes.
Uh, staff would just like to make a quick correction. So on attachments to exhibit C, page two, item eight, um, instead of February 22nd, 2024, it should be today's date, April 11th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to start with questions to staff? Commissioner.
Thank you. The $450,000 fee for affordable housing, um, that comes in if there's any, any market housing, market rate housing in the development, is that correct?
I'll ask Claire to confirm, but yeah, go ahead.
Claire Li, Assistant City Attorney, um, that is correct because the trigger for that housing obligation would be the construction of a proposal with that market rate component.
And is it tied at all to the number of market rate, uh, units?
So it is determined, um, based on the progress of affordable housing. So it is the $450,000 payment, but that can potentially be offset if the required affordable unit component plus the voluntary, any voluntary units on top of that 12% is being constructed. There is a factor, um, and a formula in the development agreement that allows the calculation for that payment to be offset based on.
To be reduced.
Correct.
Okay. And the, you mentioned that the, the development agreement could be extended from 10 to 15 years. Is, um, is that at, who has the option to do that? Or is that something that would have to be renegotiated?
That is at the applicant's option, and I believe it has to be requested at year eight to extend for another five years beyond year 10.
And, and is that discretionary on the part of the city or is that just sort of an automatic extension?
It would just be an automatic extension, but they have to notice the city that that's happening.
And, and just a, a general, uh, question of your observation or opinion. Do you find that this proposal is, um, consistent, maybe not with the current North Downtown specific plan in terms of, of details and requirements and so forth, but with the intent of the plan, um, to expand the options that are available here?
Yes, um, we did a thorough analysis in the supplemental EIR, particularly in the land use chapter, determining consistent with the relevant policies in the North Downtown specific plan and the general plan as well.
Thank you.
Who else? Yes?
So, uh, I am not as experienced with overlay districts on top of existing auto districts, and I'd like to hear a little bit about the thought process of how we can make sure, how the development agreement makes sure that a, a mixed-use, uh, building in that setting will be compatible with all the auto, uh, dealers around, um, and how the development agreement addresses that. It'd be helpful for me to know.
So the proposal that is before the city is, there is two parts. So one is the legislative amendments that is being requested, and the development agreement, um, presents that as, um, vesting the developer's right to, to do a subsequent project in accordance with those standards. So in that sense, the, um, the subsequent project would follow what has been approved as the legislative amendments and all of the standards and the development regulations that's in the overlay district. And so the development agreement vests that, and, um, in order to comply, I mean, to do the project, the developer has to comply with those, those requirements. So it moves forward that way.
Yeah, and as I remember, there were some specific standards about, you know, fencing and things that would make it physically blend better, um, in the middle of that.
Correct, and that's the consideration that goes into the overlay zone that, you know, if, at the high level, it's the kind of the land use policies and visions at the general plan and the, the North Downtown specific plan, and then going down to the more specific zoning, the allowed, um, uses and the property development regulations that's set for the overlay.
Thank you.
Who else would like to? Mr. Ward, please.
So there were three options, theoretical options presented, one of which was only office buildings with no housing at all. And so in that, if, if an option like that was chosen, is there any concession payment to the city for not providing the hoped-for housing affordable otherwise in that area?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the second half of that question?
I just wondered what would happen if, if the option of office only was selected? Would there be any payment to the city for lost opportunity for housing to be created in that area?
So the affordable housing component is triggered by a residential component in a project. And so, you know, if that's not the path, then the, the affordable housing obligations would not be triggered, it would not be activated under the DA until such time that there is a market rate component, a residential component to it that's included in a subsequent project. I just wanted to, um, supplement my response earlier to West Street Anderson's questions about the five-year extension that it's also that the developer notices the city, but they also must not have any, um, uncured defaults under the agreement, otherwise that would not happen. But if they didn't, it would be an automatic extension.
Commissioner. What?
Um, I'd like to ask a question more to the compare and contrast this proposed district with respect to the other two existing districts inside the North Downtown specific plan. So there is, there was mention of Makers Row and also the Arts District, and I did realize as I was reading through the documents that this proposed district, the mixed-use district, is primarily, um, one property owner, if that's an accurate way to describe it, whereas the Arts District and the Makers Row are consisting of several different parcels that put, uh, may belong to different, uh, property owners. So were the creations of the Arts Districts and, um, Makers Row, were those processes very similar to what we're looking at now, or were they substantially different? And how would that affect what we're looking at today, considering today?
That, um, that is a question I might want to ask staff in relationship to how the North Downtown specific plan was developed and how those uses were determined. But based on the overlay within the North Downtown specific plan, that Arts District primarily consists of the auto sales and some mixed-use commercial. So it doesn't appear there's any residential allowed in the Arts District under the North Downtown specific plan. And the Makers District appears to include both the mixed-use commercial, some pedestrian retail, and it looks to be a little bit of mixed-use residential within that component. So that would be an allowed use within that district under the North Downtown specific plan.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else right now? Then I'll jump in with some of my questions. What? Sorry.
It, I was, um, it was a great presentation, by the way, um, so thank you for that. In the findings of fact, um, speaking of alter, alternate, alternative locations, it's interesting how, um, in section 1.8.2, it discusses alternatives considered but rejected from further discussion in the draft. Right, and it's about the, it's about the discussion of you had the one, which is all office, two, which had the mixture of office, hotel, resi, and then the third had the biggest impact, if you will, of, of the resi. But when I started reading this, I started thinking about TOD programs, transit-oriented developments, and kind of that thought process of how that, and it's, and one thing you brought up was located within a half a mile of transit stopper station. So could you describe to me when, in here, it stays very clearly, given the project sites adjacent to the Walnut Creek BART, BART station, there was really no other locations outside, um, projects outside the NDSP and farther away from the BART station that would not be conducive to meeting TOD developments, purposes, and goals? So was that also, can you just, was that taken into a consideration? Because obviously, it's a pretty big change, um, to, to what we're trying to do here, but I'm assuming that TOD, which has, which brings into, um, consideration climate change and GHG emissions, can you describe to me how that was reviewed when you looked at the alternates?
Yeah, when we looked at the alternative sites, we applied the same parameters that were used to develop the project. So we looked for a site that was approximate acreage to the mixed-use special district, which was 6.2 acres. We also looked for a site, like you mentioned, that was within a half-mile of high-quality transit, uh, and we, we applied some other factors to that analysis to locate. And at the end of the day, this was the preferred site. Those sites were rejected because they didn't meet the same standards and requirements that we used to develop the project, and then also because the applicant doesn't have control of those sites as well.
And then it's, and I, and I, the other parameter was its infill, so that kind of also helps from, um, having a significant impact to, so, and I have one more question. Um, I know, I saw the discussion about in the EIR, there was already the over, um, the statement of overriding considerations for traffic, so I think that went to LOSF or something, but.
Yeah, from E to F.
Right, that's not, per, per the new Senate Bill 1043, that wasn't reviewed here. But when I took, I mean, there was so much for us to review, but when I looked at the MMRP, that, I figured it was going to be longer than 22 pages. Do I understand correctly that a lot of, when, when I looked at the, the mitigation measures, were they mainly revolving around construction-related items versus more like post-construction?
There's, it, it depends by issue area under CEQA. For example, there are some construction-related measures in air quality that have timing that consider both. So if, if a residential is already developed, then we have to do certain assessments to ensure that construction's not going to impact those residents. So that's sort of splits there. Um, a lot of it is dealing with construction, but there are a lot of mitigation addressing operational, um, but the majority of the air quality mitigation are dealing with construction.
The bats.
Those are construction.
Right, all, and then the, then the soil, gas, ground, like all those type of like assessments that are done or surveys that are done prior to the construction to then assess any additional mitigation measure. Um, okay, I just want to get that covered.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Moving to the North Downtown specific plan updates, I have a couple of questions. Page 38 of that document, we were changing the, it was encouraged additional office development north of Ignacio Valley Road, it's been reduced to, encourage additional, um, development along North, North, um, Ignacio Valley Road. Why is that changed? Because are we eliminating to all office north of Ignacio Valley Road, except for that, along Ignacio Valley Road?
You know, I might have to pull up that document. Um, I don't know, Claire, if you have that handy. Sorry. I need a minute here.
Sorry, I didn't have my microphone turned on.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so I think I'm following. So those changes were just made to reflect the changes, um, from the project. So we've amended those documents to add residential and North Main and North Main Street and North Broadway to, as part of the project amendments, to allow for those uses for the project.
Well, but this particular one is that it seems to be limiting office development only along Ignatia Valley Road instead of possibility throughout the north downtown specific plan.
You know what? I don't, I don't quite know. I'm going to ask staff to help on this one. I see what you're talking about. I'm just trying to.
Well, while they're looking at that, I'll move on to page 60, which is a similar issue. It appears that we are lowering the height limits of the entire north downtown specific plan on page 60 of the same document. And why, what was the rationale for doing that for the entire north downtown specific plan? Or am I totally misreading that?
Just one moment. I want to get to the page so I can see what you're talking about.
Sixty?
Yeah, sixty.
So.
So sixty is referring to the change for the special district. I think that there is supposed to be a corresponding color on the, on the height to the, the highlights that's in the map where it's the purple area.
Okay. And then that case.
And then the blue area, right.
It's not the entire.
It's not the entire. So it would, it would be adding the 2.5 and the 2.8 in the red box into the insertion between the 2.5 and 3.5 that I did match as the height. But it would be for the special district area.
Yep. Okay, moving on to page 38 of that same document. It looks like we're lowering the width of the lanes going on North Main past the north downtown specific plan. Is that intended to be the entire?
Which page?
Uh, I have.
One thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight and one thirty-nine.
Oh, one thirty-eight.
Um, I think this one is also to reflect the length, the width that would actually be reflecting what the, what the subsequent proposal would, and also the very, the right-of-way varies in the fifty, fifty-foot measurements. Like, I think there are some changes and fluctuations in that number, so it's not a strict number. And so that, that is included as a, as a clarification for the width of the right-of-way.
So if I understand that, we will have one with as we start up Ignatia Valley Road going towards Pleasant Hill, and it will actually narrow down.
That's my understanding to reflect that change in here.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to, I guess it's the overlay on page six of the overlay. And that is where it's referencing the design review process. And is that going to reflect the proposed change? Or we, we're in the process of updating that process right now. But we do design and review. Will that? Or are we referring to the old process? Uh, number M, page six, number M.
In the overlay zone?
Uh-huh.
Um, so it would follow the current, so that, the idea of the development agreement is to vest the current standards. And so if that's the, it's the current process. But because these are all buy right, and then they're, the way that they're putting, they, it wouldn't be changing from, even if we revised the process, it wouldn't be a substantial change from that process.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for staff? Then we will move on to public comments regarding the actual project. And we'll start out, oh, the applicant will start out first, and they have fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is David Bowlby, and I am working with Toyota of Walnut Creek. And I want to thank you Chair Strongman, fellow commissioner, fellow commissioners. I'm a former planning commissioner. What am I thinking? It wasn't in Walnut Creek. But thank you commissioners for being here tonight. And in particular, what I want to do is thank staff too. This has been a three-and-a-half-year-long process. And they have been extraordinary working with us. And I say side by side. I don't want to denote that this was anything other than working hard to come up with what is, we hope, something that is in the best interest of the community and also for Toyota Walnut Creek. And I also want to acknowledge the ad hoc committee too. Councilmember Darling and Councilmember, Councilmember Silva spent many, many hours with us on this, this particular project. And tonight I have Stephen Scanlon with us too, and he will halfway through the presentation, really delve further into the, the Walnut Creek excuse me, the Toyota aspect of things. So I thought we would do is give you just a little bit of history of the sites that we're talking about. So this is an aerial from 1939. I just thought it was kind of fun to show. The outline there is where the dealership is located. But you can see how our community has changed dramatically. The next slide we did is the dealership was finally completed in 1974. And you can see there on, on that image, the, the yellow portion. And so what I, what I did is I thought, you know, I was just going to show this, but then I said, let me do a little research to kind of begin to tell us a story about how this, this particular area of Walnut Creek has, has really matured, for want of a better word. And the Bart Station opened just a year ago, back in May of that year, which prior to that year, so 1973. You can see the courthouse. I don't know, I have, I don't really have a cursor, but you can see the post office right next to the slin, the sliver of, of the Toyota Walnut Creek parcel they own there, that large blob. And then the courthouse is, is down below. And the small industrial condos, which are right next to the larger, closer to North Main, excuse me, California, is, is built at that point too. And then finally, in the late 1950s, 680 was completed. And in March of 1960, we got the southbound South Main exit, so you wouldn't have to go all the way downtown. That brings us to the present. And, and this is basically 50 years later from when the dealership was built. You can see there's been quite a bit of change in development. You can see the Golden Triangle, the Brio property, which I actually worked on, the Summer Hills Project, I thought was probably almost over 10 years ago. The residential multifamily there. You see Cal Plaza, the Residence Inn. We have the Transit Village. You can't quite see, but that's right next to Bart. And, you know, we've got Civic Park very close to us. And so what you're seeing is Walnut Creek, we've been a suburban community for, for many decades, but probably, I would say, in the last, you know, 12 to 15 years, we're starting to see more and more, especially around the Bart Station in downtown, a more urban cluster. And it's, it's characteristic of the changing times, for sure. Wanted to take a moment and, and pause, and you can kind of take a look at these numbers, and I'll explain them in a moment. But part of the, the root of this whole process was the city wanted to retain the dealership, both from a sales tax revenue and job performance. Toyota wanted to stay in the community and, and then in turn come up with a creative way, which I'll let Stephen talk about in a few minutes, of how we could remain here and build a dealership, because after all, Toyota's not a developer. So it was, it's, we've come up with a creative way. Again, Stephen will be able to, to speak to that. But the numbers here, and these are all annual averages, and they're approximate numbers though, but it gives you sort of a sneak peek into what the impact that Toyota has here on our community from the sales revenue of 175 million. I was shocked when I saw that number. I had no idea on annual again. So approximate numbers, but pretty impressive, which then leads to $13 million in sales tax revenue. And then you can kind of keep going down the line there and seeing, including the, the, the give back to the community, just in sponsorships and philanthropy over a year period. And, and they've been a longstanding member of our community, almost over 50 years now. The next slide is, is jobs. And so you can also get another glimpse into what payroll and benefits are on an annual basis. And these are really current, more current numbers too, as we've collected it. And we're, you know, a little over $11 million in payroll and benefits. And then not only the investment in the training budget, but then we've got 172 roughly employees, and hopefully with, with the new dealership, that we'll be able to employ even more people too. So with that said, what I'd like to do is bring Stephen Scanlon up to talk a little bit more and give more depth to the, the Toyota component. And, you know, I normally don't do this, so it's not my wagon wheel. But because this is such an important project, and for me personally, having worked in Walnut Creek for a long time, I'm a member of the community, I feel like, with DRA and everything, that this warranted kind of a perspective that is a little bit different than you would normally see, because we don't have a project. We're looking for land use to hopefully bring this project. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Stephen.
Good evening. I started on this project in 2018, believe it or not, March 14th. It was an interesting, it was an interesting phone call. Toyota, Toyota North America, the, the manufacturer, brought the project to the current owners. And it was kind of a marriage made between Toyota, the previous owner and the current owners. And the notion was to try to save the dealership. There weren't a lot of other places in the surrounding communities, let alone Walnut Creek, that a dealership could, could actually fit. And so there was, after the marriage was made, it was actually a good thing and a bad thing. Very expensive land, not a lot of opportunity to relocate the dealership. And so we had to come up with a creative solution. How can we keep the dealership in Walnut Creek? Redevelop the property, afford to build a new dealership, and come up with a method to finance it. And the other, the other thing that was also important, the current dealership is on leased land, and the lease expires in about 17 years. And we wanted the new dealership and the, and the improvements to vest on land that we owned. So we wanted to relocate the dealership within the mixed-use special district. So we came up with the mixed-use special district as a way to retain the dealership. We felt like, we felt like the, the goals of the north downtown plan and Toyota's goals were harmonious. And we could synchronize our development proposal with the overarching goals of the north downtown plan. As David mentioned, we think that we're putting, we're putting density where density belongs in a part of the city that's less impactful to other parts of the city. And in addition to that, we retain the dealership. And then, as David mentioned earlier, there's the mid-block connection, which seemed to be a very important goal for the north downtown plan and part of the future vision. We were, through a lot of study and effort, able to accommodate it and still fit the deal. We believe we will still be able to fit the dealership in. As David mentioned, we're not developers. And we had the unfortunate timing of starting this process on February 19th, 2020. Yeah. It's like somebody put a bullseye on my back. So we started the process, and we realized that with the pandemic and land use and real estate market and all, all the unknowns, that we really needed a two-stage process. And as David mentioned, we're not developers. We'll redevelop the dealership, but the other land uses, those will go to a third-party developer who's yet to be identified. The land uses at the time in 2020, we didn't know what the post-pandemic world, if there was a post-pandemic world, what it was going to look like. So stage one allows us a rezone and opens up the potential for the different land uses. Stage two is identifying a developer and looking at the development proposals to bring the dealership back and then whatever else comes with it. And we think that, we thought at the time, and we still believe, that that was the best way to get through the pandemic and provide enough flexibility in the, in the land, providing enough flexibility with the land uses to allow a, a future development to be successful. And our, you know, our, our goal has been flexibility and a little bit of creativity. So as I think Claire mentioned earlier, staff was really involved in, in great detail over the last probably six months in tailoring the overlay district design guidelines to accommodate a dealership with these other potential uses. So we've looked a lot at what if it's a, what if it's a dealership and a residence? What would that look like? How do we accommodate them? What's the, what's the, what's the future design going to look like? We spent a lot of time, not just with the land uses, but also with making sure that the design guidelines were, were cohesive and copacetic. And, but, you know, they, again, staff did a great job, and we're very happy with, with the results. So thank you.
Any questions for the applicant right now?
Just a quick one. I know you don't have a project for us. Do you have some thoughts or, or plans for where the new dealership would be in this development?
When we did, when we did the initial yield studies, we looked at just maximizing the impact and then creating an envelope large enough so that whatever we brought in in stage two would fit within that and that we were secure in the entitlement in the zoning. Subsequently, when we had to study for the, one of the things we had to study for was the trail, the path. So we looked at a couple of options for dealerships, but we haven't really studied. We know we can do it, but we haven't studied in any great detail.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else right now?
And Chair Strongman, I do want to close loop on your question earlier about the page 38. I'm sorry, we're flipping through the pages. But the idea with that change is because these new uses would be introduced, if these amendments were approved, that the new uses would be introduced north of Ignatia Valley Road. And so to avoid any consistency issues, we would say not that only office development is encouraged in that area, but it's a law on YVR. So that accompanies the newly unused that could be potentially taking place.
Thank you. And now, looks like a question down there possibly? Nope. We will now open it for public comments. I have two speakers' cards, and we'll start out with Mr. Ron Gatti. And you have two minutes. I don't.
Don't you, can I have three? Part of it is the first time we've heard the proposal from Toyota, having, particularly with the three scenarios. Can I have three?
If the chair is, is okay with that.
I'm okay with three.
Thank you very much. I, I'm Ron Gatti, and I represent my dad's Gatti family and the Orlando family. Particularly at 1435 Pine Street, I've handed out attached maps of our property. And, and I'll get right to the point. We are in favor of the mixed use with the overlay, because we feel that the highest and best use of the property is for residential development. And the reason being with everything here is that it has to do with the Bart Station. Bart is, has, in deep need of ridership. They desperately need it. And the scenario number one presented by Toyota for office, right now, there's a huge glut of office space. It's very difficult to convert it to residential because of the glass on the sides of the buildings. A lot of it's built with steel, which is hard to change. So in our opinion, it's best that the mixed-use overlay be primarily for residential because of the location within a half a mile from the Bart Station. Can't really change the Bart Station. However, Toyota, I don't know, I didn't hear it mentioned at all, bought 2.1 acres right at the corner of Second Avenue. at the corner of Second Avenue and North Main. And in our opinion, that would probably be better suited for large density of automotive dealership. Or maybe have commercial on the bottom here and residential above, because, again, the close proximity to the BART station. California is a tremendous shortage of housing in California right now. And again, traffic is a huge issue in Walnut Creek, just from the last, one of the previous planning commission meetings. People were complaining about all the traffic. So 1435 Pine Street, looking at the map, you have access from Pine Street, not on North Broadway nor North Main, and that's absolutely critical, in our opinion, that any residential development have access from Pine Street. That alleviates the traffic, particularly when you're going to have 658 units, multifamily, and affordable housing. You encourage the pedestrian use by walking to BART within a half mile and getting out of the automobile for climate change. And if Toyota wants higher-density automotive, then they really should go to the 2-point-acre site a little bit further north and make this more for the residential housing for Walnut Creek with less traffic. Thank you very much.
And you have three minutes as well.
Good evening, Chairman and Plan Commission Members. My name is Cesar Placentia. I'm a field rep for North Carolina Carpenter Union. Today, I stand before you to shed light on three critical pillars of societal well-being: livable wages, healthcare, accessibility, and apprenticeships in construction. Firstly, the concept of a livable wage is not just about earning enough to survive, but thriving with dignity. It ensures that individuals can afford the basics, food, shelter, and healthcare. Secondly, healthcare should not be a luxury, but a fundamental human right. Accessible healthcare ensures that no one has to choose between financial ruin and their well-being. Lastly, apprenticeships in construction offer a pathway to sustainable careers and economic stability. By investing in vocational training, we not only address the skilled labor shortage, but also provide opportunities for personal growth and development. In conclusion, let us strive for a society where everyone has access to livable wages, healthcare, and opportunities for advancement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a public comment on this topic? Seeing none, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission to debate and discuss. Who would like to go first? Don't all jump up and down. Mr. Anderson.
I think, let me just comment on Mr. Gotti's suggestion there, that, you know, a great deal of effort was spent on the North Downtown specific plan, which indicated that automotive institutions should be in, in that area. So I think to come in at this point and say, no, we should make that all residential, I mean, not all residential, but, you know, focus, yeah, and try to move things out of it. It's an interesting thought, and, you know, staff may want to think about that or pursue it, see if there's something that might be done along those lines, but I don't think this is the place to revisit the North Downtown specific plan and their plans for automotive commercial institutions. The, I did ask earlier about, you know, whether this was consistent with that plan and the intent of that plan, and I believe it is. And so just as a general matter, I think it's inappropriate, and I know it has, there's been a lot of negotiation, a lot of discussion with staff, working with staff to come up with a plan. I think the addition of the development agreement, you know, puts, not constraints, but it puts up a framework for how this will work together. So I'm pleased with the amount of work that's gone into this, and so in general, I think I'm in favor of making the recommendations to the City Council.
I'll just make a general comment. I'd like to speak in favor of the project as well. I just, the number, the Toyota numbers, for starters, were staggering to me in terms of their impact on our community. I know they've been here a long time, but I find it hard to believe that another area wouldn't salivate to get that kind of, get that kind of, the business in their particular area. I think it's a smart integration with the North Downtown specific plan, and I am in favor of the project.
Mr. Ward.
I too am impressed with the amount of thoughtfulness that's gone into kind of reimagining what this area would look like and trying to make it consistent with the, the North Downtown Plan. I also wanted to particularly point out that one of our issues is connectivity of all these different projects that are not owned by the same people and that have somewhat disjointed uses because of the just variety that we're seeing in this particular area. So I really appreciated the, the thoughtfulness and the significant amount of land that was being devoted to, to, to connect people via, whether it's, you know, bike or pedestrian or car, to make sure that there aren't big siloed projects that are, you know, separated by walls and are unable to be, to be moved between, because I think that's really important to have, you know, the maker's area be, you know, accessible to the housing, to the other things. So I really appreciated that that was included within this, and I think it's a key component of the plan overall. So I too am looking on this quite favorably and appreciate the hard work that's gone into So at the risk of sounding repetitive, it's impressive, the amount of work that's gone into this on all parts, and I too feel that the spirit of the North Downtown specific plan is borne out in this. And for me, the opportunity to, in a lot of ways, revitalize an area that's sort of stuck in a time zone of cars and think about what the future might look like, housing is one of the things I love, but, you know, I know there is no specific plan, but I think it's hopeful what that area could do to contribute to the vitality of the neighborhood, and so I'm very favorable of all this work. Thank you.
Anyone else? Might as well.
I've negotiated a few development agreements in my time, and this was a quite lengthy one. So that must have taken a considerable amount of time. Also, one thing that I appreciated when I was reviewing this was, when you have such a high density as 107, for cost purposes, typically you tend to go up, right, for efficiency. And I thought it was quite interesting that you still kept, if you consider a plate height of 11 feet and a minimum unit of 1,500 square foot, it was, I, when I looked at it, I was like, wow, they're actually stopping it from, from the baby getting too tall, so the baby has to grow wider. And I thought, I'm a visual person. So that, to me, I was, you know, and, and also for staff, the integration of, because then the second thing that I was taking into consideration was, well, now what happens? You have the increase of the affordability, but then how does that work with state density bonus? So the integration of TOD aspects, of housing legislation, of even density with regards to how high it feels or looks, and so you're capping it, which would then make it go wider. So then you are going to have more of that feeling. It's not going to have like a San Francisco or Miami tower in midst of all of these lower scale buildings. I liked the fact that that was thought of in this plan, so it, which, there was so many pages, and I frankly did like that the MMRP was only a short 22 pages, that it wasn't that these mitigation measures, and that's why I mentioned that about the traffic, because there's, pardon me, the construction. So the pre and the construction, you're always going to have that. But the fact that I didn't see a lot of that post, that was alarming to me, to me, that made it feel like, okay, it almost blended or integrated better, so, for what it's worth.
Last comments? Go ahead.
All right. I do share a lot of the perspectives on, with the rest of the commission about the amount of, I do appreciate and want to commend the amount of work that has gone into this, especially with the communication of other parties, reaching out to them, notifying them like, hey, this is a potential land use change that we're looking at. What are the things we need to be aware of? Not just from, like, construction, but also as we move on into, how do we develop this area to make it a thriving community and also to adhere to the intent of the North Downtown specific plan, even as the surrounding areas outside of the North Downtown specific plan continue to grow and evolve and the community changes as people move in and people move around the city, as they consider, like, what could Walnut Creek look like in the future with auto dealerships in the area, but also with whatever uses the developers choose to do, whether it be to encourage visitors from outside the region, or whether to bring jobs to the area, or whether to make it a place to live because of the excellent locations of that particular parcels in question. So I do appreciate the thoughtfulness, the internal consistency to the extent possible, and the, all the anticipated effects that could come as we proceed down into the future with all the possibilities.
Thank you, and I too agree with my commissioner colleagues. Would like to thank everyone who has worked on this from the beginning of the pandemic, and that's the Ad Hoc Committee, Toyota, staff, consultants, and anyone else that's put their two cents' worth into this project. It's looking like it's potentially a very changing for Walnut Creek, a very positive way. My understanding is we have to have two separate votes on this. One is to recommend the environmental impact report to the City Council, and the second one is the actual development and changes.
That's correct, and there is two resolutions separately for those.
So if somebody would like to make a motion for the first one, for the?
So I will move that we approve the resolution recommending certification of the supplemental environmental impact report for the Walnut Creek mixed-use special district project and adoption of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program.
I'll second that.
Please take the roll.
Commissioner Quoc?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
And now we have for the second motion for actually accepting.
This is the resolution recommending adoption, right? I recommend that we move the resolution recommending adoption of a general plan amendment to specific plan amendment, municipal code amendments, and development agreement for application number Y21025 Walnut Creek Mixed Use Special District Project.
Second.
And that's just with the minor change that Commissioner Secretary introduced earlier?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Great. Commissioner Quoc?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Both motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your work that you've done. Moving on to commission considerations, do we have any? I'm sorry.
Not by staff, no.
Commission members and staff reports or announcements. Seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.